Please note, members of the public as well as applicants may be joining us via the web this evening. We ask for your patience as we continue to utilize this hybrid system. That helps ensure all who want to participate in this hearing are able to do so. In addition, for all items scheduled for public hearing this evening, a public hearing has also been conducted online at GJ Speaks.org. Where information pertaining to the applicant's request as well as presentations were available. The comments received via GJ Speaks are reviewed in advance by the planning commissioners. And are included as a part of our public testimony for each corresponding evening, these corresponding item this evening. Items on the consent agenda, and there are two this evening. Our items perceived to be non controversial in nature. And meet all requirements of the codes and regulations and or the applicant has acknowledged agreement with recommended conditions. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion unless the applicant, a member of the public. A planning commissioner or staff requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be reviewed as a part of the regular agenda. Consent agenda items must be removed from the consent agenda for full hearing in order to be eligible for appeal or rehearing. Is there a request from the commission to remove either of our items from the consent agenda this evening? See a bunch of shaking heads. Is there anyone in the audience who would like for us to remove either of our items from the consent agenda this evening? I see none there either. So with that, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? So, thank you Commissioner Scissors. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Waverly, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Alright, consent agenda will be approved. Five, six, seven, two, zero. Moving right along then. To our public hearing agenda. Public hearings are conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado, the city of Grand Junction. And the regulations duly adopted by the planning commission of the city. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information and testimony by all interested parties to enable the planning commission to make appropriate findings. And reach the conclusions required to be made by law. Both a written and video recording are made of these proceedings. Those who desire to be heard should identify themselves by their full names. The order of our hearing will be as follows. Examination of the application and determination concerning the adequacy of notification. A presentation, description and analysis of the application by staff. An opportunity for the applicant to present evidence and argument concerning the applicant's position. All other interested parties may then address the commission. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The planning commission may ask questions of staff, the applicant, or members of the public after each presentation. Public comment section of the hearing may be closed after all public comment has been received. The applicant will be given an opportunity to provide rebuttal or responsive desired. Staff may respond to any statement made by the applicant, the public, or the commission. The chair will then close the public hearing and no further evidence will be accepted. The evidentiary portion of the hearing will only be reopened by majority vote of the commission. After the closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will begin its deliberation which will end with the passage of a motion. First item on our agenda this evening is to consider a request by Dr. Brian Burden to rezone 9.28 acres from our eight residential eight dwelling units per acre to our 24. Located at 2636 Patterson Road. I understand that request has been withdrawn for this evening and we will not be hearing it today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Well, with that, we'll be moving on to the second item on our agenda. Which is to consider a request by the city of Grand Junction to amend Title 21 and Title 27 of the Grand Junction Municipal Code. To regulate cannabis businesses by providing use specific standards, specific buffering requirements from schools and rehabilitation facilities. And signage standards. Staff, are you ready to proceed? I think your microphone may not be on.
Better now?
Better now.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening. Nicole Gailhouse, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, we're going to talk about the proposed regulations for cannabis stores within the city.
Before we do that, was there a required public notice on this item?
Yes, there was. Yeah. Posted public notice, yes.
And was that notice given in compliance with the requirements of the city's code?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Well, with that, let's jump right back in where you were.
So just to kind of bring us up to speed, talk about the prior actions that this board has been involved in. So, starting in December of 2020, there was a joint workshop with the city council. Followed by a series of five workshops throughout January and February of 2021. And during these workshops, the, this board developed recommendations that were provided to the city council. Broadly speaking, the direction was to parallel the corollary business types with emphasis. On the comparison between marijuana sales and liquor sales. And between marijuana processing or cultivation and general indoor industrial activities. From there, city council engaged in workshops throughout the remainder of 2021 and early 2022. And so that's brought us to where we are today, where we have a draft ordinance for zoning development regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Gailhouse. Before we move on too much further, are there any exhibits that we should introduce for our record this evening?
The only things for us is the staff report and the ordinance.
Are there any other exhibits that were not included with the staff report?
No, no, there's no additional.
Alright, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. So, there are three ordinances that kind of come together to compose all of the regulations for cannabis stores within the city. Two of these were just approved through the council last week. And are outside of the zoning development code. And those are the cannabis marijuana uses licenses and regulations. And the retail marijuana sales and use tax and marijuana excise tax ordinances. The third one, which is what is before you today, is amending Title 21 and Title 27. Of the zoning and development code for use standards, buffering, signage and definitions. So, before I get into that ordinance, I'll just kind of give you a brief overview of the whole, so you have some context. So the first thing is systems, having everything set up in place and that starts with the ordinance adoption, which is where we're at right now. And then establishing the licensing authority and hearing officer. Once all of that is in place, there's a 30 day period for applications. That is scheduled to start upon effectiveness of the cannabis regulations that were approved by council last week. Then, we enter an application review, which can take up to 90 days depending on the number and complexity of the applications we receive. And that process includes background checks and a completion review by different agencies of city staff. From there, the applications will be referred to the hearing, hearing officer. With a recommendation from staff of approval or denial. And they will go to a public hearing. The hearing officer will affirm those recommendations. And the applicant would have an opportunity if they've been recommended for denial to kind of plead their case out if needed. From there, anyone who's recommended for approval will have, go into a randomized selection. So it'll be a double blind selection and it's only if the qualified applicants. Once those 10 licenses are selected. There will be, they can, they then proceed to apply for their state license. They have to go through inspections for security and building. And then they would be issued their city license. They have 12 months to begin operation and they have three years before they can sell or transfer their license. On an ongoing basis, there's a quarterly inspection for the first year. Annual renewal and random audits and inspections. So, getting into the ordinance that we're describing today. We're updating the use table to remove the marijuana related business from the list of principal uses. And instead adding regulated cannabis store to that list. This permits the use by right in most of our commercial zoning districts. So it's in B1, B2, C1, C2, MU, BP and MX. And this is subject to use specific standards. So these use specific standards are being added to the code as well. The first kind of component of that is the zoning. So it's going to be unlawful for them to locate in a building that has a residential unit in it. Within the Horizon Drive Business Improvement District, there's a limit of two stores. So as we're going through that randomized selection. If two businesses are selected for that. Any that are selected in within Horizon afterwards would not be eligible. It's just the first two in the lottery process. And then no stores will be permitted on the first floor on Main Street between First Street and Seventh Street. Then we talk about buffering. So there's a thousand foot separation requirement. From public and private elementary, middle, junior high or high schools. As well as from CMU and WCCC. We did not apply this to all institutes of higher learning. There was some discussion about that during the council workshops. And it was determined that it was just these two universities that wanted to have that separation. And we didn't want to apply to, you know, some of the other institutes like for example, the like Salon Professional Academy. So it could have more broad impacts if we left it there. There's also 500 feet from substance and mental health prevention treatment or recovery centers. And then there, it originally was a buffer from city parks and that was removed per direction from the city council. This buffer is not, and as the crow flies buffer, it is calculated from the perimeter of the the closest part of the parcel for the school or rehab facility. To the closest point of the building as a pedestrian would legally walk. So it is a little different than just a standard buffer. Then we talk about signage. So from a general standpoint, there's prohibitions on specific terminology that relates to the word pharmacy. There is prohibition on language that's misleading, deceptive, false, or designed to appeal to those under age 21. And it clarifies signage and advertising that does not require a permit. When we get into the actual construction of signage. It relates signage within overlay districts to the respective overlay. So if it's within the Horizon Drive, you would go to that section for the regulations. Or, you know, the 24th Street, 24 Road overlay, you'd go there. And the one exception there is within North Avenue. The North Avenue overlay does not actually have regulations for signage. It has encouragement and incentives for signage. So that area is going to fall into the regulations we've proposed for the non-overlay areas of the city. Which limits to a maximum height of 20 feet and a maximum area of 150 square feet. Then finally, we've modified the Horizon Drive Business Improvement District overlay. To limit the signage for cannabis businesses to 20 feet in height and 75 square feet in area. And that was done because that zoning district or that overlay. Regulates signage depending on where in the overlay you are. And we wanted to have a simple standard within that overlay to apply to all cannabis stores. And with that, I'm here for any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. What was the intent behind letting the stores to two in the Horizon Business District?
My understanding is that that was based on conversations with the Business Improvement District itself.
Any other question? Commissioner?
So along those same lines, then you said in your presentation that if if two businesses were selected that had properties on Horizon Drive. And then additional ones won the drawing but had properties selected on Horizon Drive. They would be kicked out and another drawing made to replace them. They would not be given the chance to relocate or locate in a place other than the two on Horizon. Is that correct?
That's correct because each applicant is limited to one location that they are.
Each applicant is limited to, and I'm asking these questions because I'm I'm concerned about the, the process here that only puts this use ordinance to the planning commission. And in normal circumstances and in free market circumstances, that would be appropriate and we've shown it to work. But in this case, it's been deemed to not be a free market scenario and there's a limit of 10. And the most concerning part that I have that I think influences what we're doing here tonight is that for the applicants have to have a predetermined site located for their applicant. And then if they win the ticket, they're stuck with that site no matter what, right?
That's correct.
So that, this, this idea of siloing the, the elements of how these ordinances are moving through into the typically appropriate segments of our, of our local government. Unfortunately, we're kind of, we're kind of blowing it up and murky in the waters here with how that's been put down. So I think I'll reserve a little bit further comment till maybe there's more, more discussion, but that's, that's quite troubling to me when we put a planning and zoning and, and the interest of the community first. This feels a little bit like meh. We don't really care about that because other elements are completely throwing out the potency of what we're doing here. That's my concern.
Do we have other questions for staff at this time? It looks like we don't. Thanks very much. Well, since we don't have a typical applicant here, this is the city's own application. Suppose we'll move on and open the public hearing for public comment. Please direct questions to the commission, not to the applicant or staff, who are the same people in this case. If testimony is duplicative or repetitious of what has already been presented, please note that in your comments, you have disagreement or agreement with preceding testimony. Public comment is limited to three, three minutes per person. Please note, the planning commission may not directly respond to questions that you pose, but we have heard your questions. And may choose after a public comment to ask the applicant or staff to address specific questions. Do we have anyone interested in providing public comment on this item this evening? Very few people here in person, but perhaps we have some folks online.
We do not have any virtual attendees at this time.
Alright. Well, in that case, it looks like we don't have anyone interested in providing us public comment this evening. And I assume that the city has no desire to make a response to the no public comment that we've received on this matter. Alright. Well, do we have any other questions for the staff slash applicant that we have thought of in the last 20 seconds?
Go ahead. I have one more extension to be with the slide. It's my subscription number.
I was just gonna give you back on what you were saying. So can you just talk about the reason behind having the site first? A little bit more in that in alignment with how a liquor license works as well, like that all has to be done ahead of time?
So it is a little similar to that. Part of the reason for having the applicant select the location first and limiting them to only one location has to do with some issues that have come up in the surrounding cities. That have had similar regulations where applicants come in and they kind of stack the system. So you know, it gives kind of an advantage to people who can afford to, you know, secure leases or property, multiple properties. They can come in under a different entity sometimes. So the goal was to try to really make the licensing process itself. Because there are only 10, 10 licenses available to make that as equitable as possible.
And, and we're not, we're not in a position to really challenge that here. We can't influence that decision. Is that correct? That's, that's done in another ordinance and through a, a different, well, it's council that ends up creating this. So all we can do is raise the flag that they're completely usurping the idea of zoning and appropriate locations or maybe let me step away from that comment. They are certainly muddying the waters and creating some situations where you, you could have, as an example, if there are 30 sites out there that might be deemed, let's say 30 applicants that want to apply for these 10. It's entirely possible that the, that the most suitable places for the community for a reasonable site. That maybe everybody could agree on, there's probably 10 or more reasonable ones, but if they're not the ones with the golden ticket and in fact, the, the least desirable locations for our community. Are the ones that get the golden ticket. There's no avenue, even though those applicants, the rest of the applicants didn't get the golden ticket. The ones who won are stuck with the least desirable sites when the most desirable sites remain available out there. That's the way this, this ends up. It doesn't matter, other than our zoning or anything else, we, we there's nothing that we can do here to help the community end up with the best, most desirable locations for these things. Is that correct?
The way the ordinances are currently written, yes, that's correct. What you could do is, you know, provide a comment with your recommendation to the board as this goes forward to kind of raise that issue to them and to the council.
Commissioner?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I understand my fellow commissioners angst. In a pure, what we deal with mainly with already written code and development, it, it are, are decisions are pretty clear cut. And I understand that, you know, I'm a free marketer too. I think we need to look at though that this is a in the, in the report, this is a legislative act. And maybe our legal counsel can say something in regards to that. So it gives us more leeway to, with guidance from all the workshops from city council. That is done as to their, their, their desires. But it's not real cut and dry, you know, because it's a legislative act. So maybe, I don't know, Jamie, do you want to speak to that?
Jamie Beard, Assistant City Attorney. I guess, I'm not sure if you've got a question in there or what it is you're looking for, but as a legislative act, it's true. And there have been numerous workshops and discussions that have taken place over, I think at least the last year. It may be longer. I'd have to rely on the planning department to say how many of those communications have taken place or meetings that have taken place. And that is matters that have been discussed. And I can say, without having participated in all of those meetings, I know that there have been a lot of back and forth at which direction that it was expected was the best way to go. But it has went before city council. There was a first reading. There was also a second reading and an ordinance has passed. And technically tonight, the discussion that you're having right now in regards to the number of licenses and or where those licenses may be able to locate was included as a part of the regulatory ordinance that has already been passed by city council. As indicated though by Nicole, if you want to at least express what some of your concerns might be. We don't expect this will necessarily be the final decisions that are made when it comes to operating regulated cannabis stores in the city of Grand Junction. And if matters are looked at again, then they will at least have had what some of your positions are, your concerns may be in regard to your thinking whether 10 is correct or that where those 10 are located or if the location has to be tied to a specific license. If I understood the concerns that you had, Keith.
That was perfect. And I have one follow-up question, Ms. Beard. Who, if this, when the process has started. The city council is the people that can amend the code, correct? If they want to change something.
When it comes to the Grand Junction Municipal Code, that is done by ordinances and ordinances are determined by the city council. When it involves our zoning and development code, it is set up specifically that those changes or amendments come to the planning commission first. And there is either a recommendation for or a recommendation or no recommendation for the changes that are proposed. But in the end, city council also makes the decision in regards to the zoning and development code. But all of the ordinances that make up the Grand Junction Municipal Code are decided by city council.
So there's a process in place for the community to voice concerns as we go forward. And then there could be action taken to amend that. Through advisory with the planning commission and then to final city council.
That is correct. And I just want to say, don't lose a side of, there have been numerous workshops that have already had many discussions in regards to the cannabis ordinances that have recently passed, including discussions in regards to the zoning and development portion. Regarding it and any in the future moving forward in regard to legislative matters. It's unusual that there would not be workshops that would be considered that people could at least come and listen. In some instances, there may be participation, but most workshops don't allow for the public to participate, but they can listen. And or there have also been numerous community groups that have, I believe, made suggestions towards how this should or shouldn't be written. Each of the ordinances that have been considered and will be considered this last one.
Thank you.
I'm compelled to maybe reiterate my concern about how those, those scenarios of there's a process down the road and there's these things that have typically worked in our, in our government planning and these kinds of codes that come together. Don't have the same structure and, and strength in this case. So for example, if you got down the road and, and you decided, oh, we want to do it differently now. You, you're gonna have to reengage an entire draw, right? And, and this, this by chance selection sort of thing. And I don't think I'm just being, the sky is falling, the sky is falling here. We've seen this in other communities, some of them very near to here in Grand Junction. And what that's done has been not in the best interest for those communities, the end result. So let, let me ask this question because it may in fact circle back to what we're approving here from a land use standpoint. Currently, right now, there is no required buffer between licensed stores as long as they aren't within the thousand feet and the 500 foot separations that are there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So admit that this is a worst case scenario and yet I'm going to say that there's 30 applicants again. If 10 of those applicants want to be out by the mall. And the other 20 want to be throughout the, the rest of the, the city. There's a scenario here where the 10 that gets selected could all be the ones that are just out by the mall. There's a scenario here where the 10 that gets selected are door to door to door to door to door and that's the 10. And we've all in those workshops and otherwise, we've all expressed concerns about having a green light district sort of scenario. The free market would typically address that in that those competitive folks would want to not be right next door to their competitors and, and move out. So if we are burdened with this, applicants must have a secured property beforehand and then not be able to move them afterwards. How do we alleviate the concern of all of a sudden you have all 10 of them right in close proximity, which has been an element in all of the workshops that we don't want to see? And I am, I want to be clear that what I don't want to do is add another layer of government reach here and say, hey, maybe we just throw in a buffer here between shops. Because now it's going to do the same thing to everybody in line that the Horizon Drive deal is doing where once the first two are done, the next one could win the golden ticket by chance. But simply because of a predetermined location based on what was available after everybody else chose theirs, they get, they get bumped. So I'm, I'm concerned about this hypothetical, as far fetched as it may or may not be. Tamara, it looks like you maybe have a response here.
Chairman Teskey, Commissioners, Tamara Allen, Community Development Director with the city. As many of you know, I've been very much at the helm and point of this topic over the last year and a half as the city has worked on developing the regulations. So appreciate the time. Probably what I'm going to say here is not going to be additive or answer that question. But I, what I, I want to say is I, I think the issue you're struggling with Commissioner Ellers is frankly outside of the scope of the conversation tonight. As the attorney Ms. Beard just presented the regulations imposing the 10 cap. As well as the relationship of the applicant to a property. Is part of regulations and the use ordinance that already passed. is part of regulations and the use ordinance that already passed to city council. So really outside of the purview of this planning commission. But certainly understand, and I think I hear your concerns about that relationship to the property and how properties get selected. Now certainly what is within the purview of tonight's discussion is consideration of buffers. So you brought that up in the, the last couple of sentences of your information there or your question. But you know, the, the buffers are certainly part of the review and recommendation that you have in front of you tonight. And certainly if you have information to add to that, we certainly welcome that conversation in discussion. But the other components have been completed and adopted as part of recent regulations that were recently passed at council.
I appreciate those, those comments, and I, I do recognize that the number of applicants and that other ordinance is not under the purview tonight. I'm torn here because I can't imagine those who are awaiting this process to finally be implemented after being voted on so long ago and how long it's taken us to get this. And it's, it's needed to take this, it's an important matter, so it's needed to take this long. And yet, you know, moving at the speed of business is typically faster than this. So I, I don't want to be an element that slows this process down anymore. But because our purview is about protecting the, not necessarily protecting the community, making sure that the opportunities that are in the best interest of the community are, are put forth here. I'm not prepared to add any language here that says there needs to be a buffer. But because of the example that I laid out, I, I can't support this either. And that comes at the risk of slowing this down for private sector, and that's what I don't like about it. But I don't want to be part of, of a government that just says, well, move it on through and it ends up being a disservice. So I, I, I'm happy to participate in, in other avenues to address those other ordinances, but when it comes to this, if those other ordinances have been passed, that example that I gave of 10 stores being right next to each other, or you know, not, not letting the free market capitalize on the most desirable places. I can't, there's something missing in this one. And, and that's a shame, but that's, that's where I would be on this. And I understand that it has nothing to do with what we've got here. It's all because of the other. But this is where these siloed elements are, can no longer be siloed, siloed as we've previously experienced success with because we're changing the parameters by limiting on one side.
Thank you, Commissioner. We may have already partly gotten into this, but let me close our public hearing portion officially and turn back to the commission here for additional discussion and deliberation. It looked like Commissioner Wickerly was ready to go.
So I have two questions for you. So first of all, the, so I, so I, I mean, I pulled the slides back up on my computer that might be helpful. So we know what we are talking about and voting about clearly tonight. But what about the use specific standards and zoning that specifically lists the limit to stores within the Horizon Drive? And then no stores permitted on first floor of Main Street between first and seventh. My question over, my first question overall is, are these all points, bullet points that the city council, did they have discussion about this? And are these the things they wanted to see in this zoning code?
So both of those items, the Horizon Drive and the Main Street, were conversations between city council. And that also had input from the Horizon Drive Business and Pyramid District itself and from the Downtown Development Authority.
But the city council has kind of agreed that those are the things they sort of want to see?
That's correct.
All right. And then on Main Street, what was the thought in allowing stores other than on just the first floor? I mean, I would see just not allowing the whole between first and seventh.
I'm going to let Tamara speak to that.
Sure. Yeah, Chairman Teskey, Commissioner Wickerly, thank you for the question. I think the question, if I can paraphrase this, is why the second floor of buildings on Main Street between first and seventh? This is as Ms. Gail House just noted, also an example where city council asked staff to go out and actually converse and work with those boards, this one specifically the DDA, to see what their preference was on how this use may impact their gem, if you will, of downtown and wanted to be considerate of their function in that marketplace in the downtown. So we spent time with their board and ultimately what the board came back with was a request to not limit them on Main Street, but wanted them to be on the second floor of the buildings, assuming that there would likely be limitations that came with that restriction. So that frankly, almost verbatim has been introduced as part of this ordinance and certainly has been in front of the council and supported at that level.
Do we have other questions or discussion, Commissioner?
Ms. Gail House, um, could you go through the proposed amendments? The, in particularly the planning principle to 6A, 6G? And, and discuss what, what you have in your report. I understand planning principle two, resilient and diverse economy as an industry of a whole, I think we're talking about. 6A economic diversity, support the further diversification of the economy. That is prepared to anticipate innovating, proactively respond to cyclical economic fluctuation and evolution. If I could get some clarification on that and then understand the sales and use tax revenue partner.
So the question is how this ordinance supports that?
Well, could you describe more what, how 6A? I, I guess that you're saying that you're in your report that meets some criteria?
Yes. So bear with me just a second. I'm going to try to pull up the, the comprehensive plan. So I can pull up the additional items that are underneath that to kind of discuss there.
That your, and your findings affect your recommendations?
Yes.
For?
So the look faster on there. Yeah. Sorry, it's a very large document, so it takes a second. Sorry. So to, to get started, um, the, the ordinance is allowing an additional use and helping to diversify the economy that way, you know, it's another avenue of of a business that can help support a vibrant economy essentially. So I'm just trying to, like I said, pull up this so I can look at the individual ones underneath, underneath that in terms of implementation. But, you know, responding to, you know, economic fluctuations and evolution. You know, the more types of industries you have and the more diverse that base is, the easier it is to respond when some piece of the economy fluctuates. So you know, you see examples like in Detroit where it was very heavily reliant on the automobile industry. And when that left, the economy kind of collapsed. So the more items that you have within your economic base, the, the more resilient it's going to be.
Commissioner.
Ms. Gail House. You know, those of us that are on this commission, we tend not to go to city council meetings for ethical purposes. So I have no idea. I'm sure you had a good turnout, but could you describe the turnout of the potential industry during the hearings? I mean, I mean, I, I think Commissioner Ellers, Commissioner Ellers' concern is valid. And I think we need to think, but what does the industry say?
Yeah, Chairman Teskey, Commissioner Gass, I think that's a, a great question. I'm glad you asked it. As many of you are aware, this has been a very lengthy process in the adoption of the council's regulation and taxation ordinance on April 6th was actually the exact one-year anniversary since we initiated the actual development of the regulations. But as you guys are aware, and as Ms. Gail House noted, the process actually began about six months before that. It was in late summer of 2020 when we started the conversations with the community. And to your question specifically, as we got started, and if you remember that point in time, it was all about whether our council actually wanted to put the question on the ballot. And so we did a lot of homework. We did a ton of work with other municipalities to understand their regulations and the kind of lessons learned that they had engaged throughout that process. But ultimately, and to your point, we actually set up a working group of a number of our citizens, a couple of our technical staff, and then a number of industry specialists to really start understanding the regulations and their perspective that they lent. That carried on throughout all of the kind of winter of 2020 into 2021 in preparation for that ballot issue. We spent, as Ms. Gail House noted, a significant amount of time with you at planning commission as well, trying to formulate some initial recommendations based off at that point in time, a limitation of six potential licensees. And then that evolved. And when we, in April, on April 6th, and not only did the measures 2A and 2B pass, but we also received three new council members, maybe it was four, excuse me for miscounting on that. I think it was actually four. And so we quickly turned into spending a fair bit of time with them, educating them on the topic. And many of them were very curious to know exactly what you said, what is our citizens want when it comes to regulations? And what does industry want? What do they need? We conducted seven different listening sessions throughout this community and various different forums, both virtual and in person. And we had a huge attendance by our industry. And they were very strong participants in that listening session process. I will say that from May of 2021, our city, current city council had nine workshops on the topic, all of which, except for perhaps the last, which was the actual, the hearing, were incredibly well attended by industry. And we received written comments as well as many of those workshops were actually open forum as well, where they took three minutes of comments on each one of those. And in those cases, industry were very active participants in that process. So hopefully that helps characterize a little bit of the process behind it. But certainly I think to your point, specifically industry's representation throughout.
Do we have other questions or comments, Commissioner?
On the buffering, there in the staff report, it talks about licensed services for prevention, treatment, or recovery from substance use and mental health concerns. Are those facilities that are licensed, like licensed treatment centers at the facility level?
So the qualification under that is a specific terminology with the state department of health. And so the list that we have to buffer from is provided from the state under their licensure requirements.
Commissioner.
I'll, I'll put this to the entire planning staff. You know, I, I am concerned about having a whole bunch of stores together as, as Commissioner Eller says. Does this, what, what is the practical, is it, will that happen with this ordinance? I thought that it, that, that it out, or I don't know.
So I mean, as Commissioner Ellers, you know, stated, it is a possibility that certain areas could end up with a concentration. There are buffers from certain things, so from the schools and from these other facilities. And within certain areas, you're going to have kind of a natural limitation, like the downtown area, because they have to be on the second floor. And within Horizon area, you're only going to be allowed to. But outside of those two areas, it certainly could happen. But we don't really have a way to predict that at this point.
What was city council's reaction to that question or did they have discussion? And maybe that's not relevant to our discussion. If it's not relevant, please advise me.
Yeah, Chairman Teskey, Commissioner Gass, it's, I, I think it's relevant. And let me tell you why. I think it's related to the land use of the property, right? So it hasn't been something that the council has contemplated, putting buffers between the stores. But if you all recall, for those that were on the commission last January and February, there was a fair bit of discussion about whether there should be buffering between stores. Now I think that there's probably the, the hypothetical versus what may actually come to be. And I think, for example, we have already received, I think, seven or eight requests for zoning verifications for sites or potential site locations throughout the city, and they're spread across the city. So now there could be a chance in which they may collectively all land in one spot, but it would be a chance. Maybe one in a million, but that's still a chance. But I just, I just share that, that, you know, that's not what we're seeing so far as people start to begin to ask for us to look at their sites and to evaluate them based on the preliminary buffering information that we have in front of us. So again, hypothetically, yes, it could happen, whether it's realistic or not. I'll let you guys be the judge of that.
Can I follow up with thoughts on that? First of all, I'm not exactly sure what the great fear is of some clustering of similar shops. There's districts for all kinds of things, restaurants, bars, sports, whatever. So if we're going to decide this is a legal activity, obviously, which we're doing, and that retail is to be encouraged. If it turns out that they cluster, it would probably mean because that's an area that was having trouble filling their spaces. And this would serve a good function. And if it, you know, becomes perhaps an area that stimulates a lot of business there, then so be it. To me, that's a very free market. So I, I don't really have any concerns about that. Plus, it's much more likely that they'll just spread out and maybe there'll be a minor cluster here or there. I just don't think it's that big of a deal. And I don't see any reason that we should be, you know, rehashing whether should, we should have buffers? Because I think we went through that and decided it was too problematic. So I say we should just let it rest.
Chairman Teskey, if I may add one piece of context to that I don't think we've noted so far. One is that the initial site has to be a singular site and a single applicant. But it's not a forever deal. So the, the regulations that the council promulgated, promulgated and passed does require them to hold on and utilize that site for three years. But after that three years, they could look to transition a site. So that is a significant length of time for some businesses, for others that say, hey, you know, I'll invest that time and then perhaps look for another site location that may be better suited. So it's not a permanent lock into a specific site, but it is for a period of three years.
Kind of want to hit the reset button and, and really acknowledge that everything about this, this, this plan and the work that's been done and the vetting, as long as it's taken, it, it has truly yielded a lot of good things. And I don't think that there's been any, you know, stubbornness or, or an unwillingness to look at examples from other communities and try to use those experiences for our benefit. So I really applaud a lot of this, including the, the involvement of the industry itself, as well as the rest of the community, really do. I am only, only concerned about what these, these other mechanisms could potentially do to us. And, and Commissioner could potentially do to us. And Commissioner Scissors, I tend to agree with you. Listen, I I can't win a cake in a Boy Scout raffle. So the statistical outliers of what could happen are not typically of a concern for me personally either. And yet, we, there is no mechanism for relief should that event happen. And it is possible. And that's, I think, what I'm trying to raise the flag on the most. And this is where what can I do about it, based on that conserve that I, concern that I perceive to be very real? I can only look at how does it impact this land use and what our intentions are from a community planet. We want the businesses to succeed and we want those communities that they exist in to succeed. And to not have an outlet or a relief valve in the event that something goes there. It's, it's concerning to me and I don't know how else to participate in getting that one element, which is either having to choose and stick to the land that you have before you even know if you got the ticket, or not having the ability to make some sort of request to change if you get the ticket, but there's a proximity of all these other stores or a more desirable site that we can show public benefit by being able to transfer. I don't know. I'm sort of brainstorming aloud here, but the three years thing, I very much appreciate Ms. Allen's reference to that. And yet, businesses fail or succeed in a three- to five-year period, again, typically in a in more of a standardized data set there. The marijuana industry is burdened heavily, heavily more than anybody else with upfront expenses and in security and licensing. And the state licenses are tied to a specific site and all of these things. So there's it's tough to, it's tough to perceive how somebody would want to shift and then be able to to fund that, or at least that the concern is there. So, gosh. I hear, I hear some of that, well, it could be this, and I'm all for that. And I can't ignore that. It could go the other way that is less favorable for our community. And because we don't have a relief valve there and we don't have a mechanism to get that, like, changed, I don't know how to ignore it. I want to. I want to get this done. I want this industry to go and get and open up for business. The what-if is a big one.
If I may, as we're jumping into this discussion here, I'm wondering from my fellow commissioners, what, I hear the concern about the risk of randomized selection, that once we've vetted initial applications, they'd be selected in this randomized way. And because they're selected randomly, we, as a city, through our various operating bodies, including this Planning Commission, are giving up some of the tools that we ordinarily use to talk about the locations of particular land uses within the city. And that's going to a lottery instead. Which is a concern for the reasons that have been raised, right? What if these sites aren't the best sites? What if these sites are located together and we wish they weren't? What about those things? And we won't have any control over that under the current proposed regulation. However, to sort of refocus on the proposed ordinance that's in front of us tonight, there are a few aspects of what we're being asked, which are sort of land use-related questions. What zoning district should this be allowed in within the overall scheme of the city zoning? Where should this zoning be allowed? There are certain restrictions being imposed with respect to zoning. And then there are some buffering restrictions as well as some sign regulations and the things like that. I'm not hearing any concern about the sign regulations or, you know, those, those aspects of what's in this, in this proposed amendment. Or any real concerns about what the allowed zone districts would be, or what the additional sort of use-specific zoning restrictions might be. And I'm trying to think through, as I'm listening to this, what, what mechanism do we think we could put in to a zoning ordinance that would address this question of randomized selection in a way that we think would be helpful? And we've talked a little bit about buffers. We could do that as a way to prevent clustering. We could be recommending, we'll add another, add another buffer restriction here. You've got A, B, C. Why not add D 1,000 feet from another, you know, regulated business. But we've talked many times in years gone by about the potential risks of doing that and sort of lack of utility in that approach. And in a way, we're having the same concerns about the Horizon Drive Business Improvement District, which is functioning as a buffer, right? There's two. You can only have two in that district. So that's a buffer of sorts. Once those two are there, no one else can locate in that area. And that's the same problem we've observed with buffers overall from this, this commission and other places. So I just acknowledging the risk, acknowledging the concern, and then trying to focus on, well, what, what could we do to this zoning regulation, this land use proposed regulation to try to fix that? I don't have any good answers to that question. I'm just raising that question because I hear the concern, but I'm, I'm worried there's not much and perhaps nothing that this group can do about it.
That's a, that's a good question. And green light to, to jump in, if we're starting to get into considerations that aren't appropriate here. But adding the buffer, my concern there would be now all of a sudden, the first guy gets in here and whatever buffer you've created, you've just automatically eliminated everybody else. Right? And that would be that seems troublesome. Maybe either legal or, or planning. Is there any language that we could put in here regarding the buffer that that could influence or maybe come over the top of the not being able to change sites afterwards or to give an opportunity to expedite what can happen after the three-year period? Something along the lines of if there are two or more, or more than two, whichever one we're going to go, other stores selected within a certain buffer, you can then apply for a relocation within these, the same, same, same zones. So inherently, it's a, it's a form of buffer, but all it's, it's not creating a buffer that eliminates anybody out. It now accepts that, okay, there's this, there's this clustering through a random draw and we want you to give the option in another process. Maybe it's coming back through some level of review or some, some mechanism at the city where they can come in and say, we'd like to consider moving locations because of reasons X, Y, and Z. And we can use a lot of the similar criteria that we already do surrounding, you know, public benefit and certainly the desire for the city to have a successful marijuana industry and economic development surrounding it.
I'm sorry, I think your microphone's not on.
I hear what you're saying. I don't think that would be an amendment to the ordinance that's in front of you. I think that would be an amendment to the regulatory ordinance that's been passed by the city council, particularly in the area where it talks about that transfer of license. If the council so desired, they could add an amendment in there that if there's so many within a certain buffer, they could apply for that transfer earlier. But I don't believe that that would apply to this, this ordinance in front of you today.
Commissioner?
So I'll just finish up with my thoughts. I actually am not as concerned as Commissioner Ellers that they are going to all end up in the same place. I'm more in line of thinking with Commissioner Scissors, that I think just naturally, they'll probably be spread out. My concern was Horizon Drive is creating a buffer and the problems that will come from that potentially. I think that's potentially where the biggest problems will come from is three people getting drawn and one of them won't get it just because he's, there's already two there. But I do respect Horizon Drive's, you know, the business district and what they do there and that that was the input. And I feel like I understand that this is kind of the direction the city council's going. I don't think it's bad. I don't know if we can fix it. I don't know if we can fix it tonight. We've talked about this in meetings before. We talked about creating quadrants, zones, areas. I think the buffering does get really, I think that has more problems than what the, what we're looking at currently.
Quite frankly, maybe we've done the best that we can do here tonight by having this open discussion in hopes that as they move on to these other ordinances, they reference this. From a planning perspective, this is a real concern. And the only person, the only group that can fix it, should they choose to, would be council. So I appreciate you making that comment because there is some clarity there that maybe, maybe simply by bringing this up in a, in a new light, now that everything's kind of molded into what it is, they can see what the real consequences of all these pieces coming together are.
You know, I'm proud of, I'm proud of my commissioners. We've had some good, good discussion here. We've had some thoughtful discussion here and we've had some open, honest discussion. And I think that's what the city deserves. Legislation is messy. It's never perfect. We're dealing with legislation. I appreciate what Ellers and other commissioners have been concerned about the lottery system. But you know, as a doctor, and I don't know, forgive me, Ken, it's, I'm just a dentist. You know, there's, there's a thing, there's a thing principle called Hippocratic oath. It says, do no harm. You know, I think we all think buffers are, you know, the more buffers, that just creates more bad stuff. The problem is, we, there's been over a year of massaging this and a lot of public input. And I think we probably have to vote up or down on this legislation. And that's our job. Is it perfect? I don't think so. But my concern is if we start kind of injecting things and trying to change some things, we may make it worse. So I, I, I don't know. It's a difficult one, but that, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have other thoughts or comments to share? Looks like we don't. In that case, are we ready to make a motion?
I guess I've been selected.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Planning Commission Chair, on the zoning and development code amendments, ZCA I know that the Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval with the findings of fact as listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The opposed say nay.
Nay.
Matter will pass 6 to 1. All right. I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Is there any other matter that we should attend to before we go?
No, sir.
Thank you. In that case, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.